...to open a platform for Rick Dentson, CEO of the county, to talk about the consideration by the Board of Supervisors for an increase in transient occupancy. Rick, it's your stage.
Thanks. As Terry mentioned, the Board of Supervisors is considering increasing TOT. The transient occupancy tax here in Mariposa County currently is 10 percent. And then, of course, you have the V.I.D. charge, which is also under 100 percent, which is carrying on the bills that you folks generate for the tourists. TOT is by far the largest revenue source in Mariposa County, and that makes us unique. Most counties, their primary revenue source is property taxes, then sales tax. We also have other sources where things come in, but way down there, usually a footnote, is the TOT. But here, it is the major driver, and it has shaped and formed Mariposa County into being the way it is. The level of service that the county is able to provide, the number of services, the things that the county is able to do, is driven by TOT. The overall budget in Mariposa County, with some double counting and all that in there, but round numbers, $100 million is what is spent every year for all of the county's operations, everything the county does. However, $60 million of that is not in the general fund. They're in specialized funds that come in for one purpose, are collected for one thing, go out for something else. Really, there's no discretion on these. So $60 million of the $100 million is automatic, is the best way to put it. So that gives the Board now about $40 million that they allegedly control. But of that $40 million, there's probably another $15 million which is non-discretionary. So these are funds that run through the general fund, but again, are very tightly controlled on what they can spend the money on. And most of those kinds of funds are things like what you see, the human services department, the food stamp operation, those kinds of things are... The social services are really funds that come into the county, then go back out, and they're tightly controlled, and the Board does not have much discretion. So when we get right down to it, the Board of Supervisors controls about $25 million, and that's what they have discretion over, and that's where they can decide how those dollars are going to be spent. When, in Mariposa County, it reflects really the values of the county, and I think the values of the citizens that the Board of Supervisors serves, half of that discretionary number, in essence, is used for public protection. That's where we pay for our Sheriff's Department, is what we often think of as public protection. But also, the District Attorney's Office is in there, the probation department is in there in public protection, the jail itself is another aspect of public protection. But about half of the discretionary money that the Board gets is in public protection. And then the other half goes to a wide variety of other discretionary expenses. That's how we pay for libraries, park and rec, the general operation of the county, my office, the Assistant's Office, the Auditor's Office. All of those are paid for out of those discretionary funds. Over the past several years, if you've noticed at all, other counties have been hit very, very hard on their discretionary expenses. And again, discretionary, sometimes is a term that is a little bit confusing. Most people don't consider the sheriff to be discretionary, but it's discretionary. All the Board is required to fund as a salary of the sheriff. No deputies, no cars, no... Everything else is considered discretionary. But again, around the state, counties have been hit very hard because they do rely on property taxes, and the property taxes have taken a big hit. Here in Mariposa County, property taxes are a much smaller portion of our overall budget, and we did not take as big a hit as most other places. We didn't have the vote, so we didn't have the burst. And our revenues have remained fairly stable. We have decreased a little bit in property taxes, we've decreased a little bit in sales tax, which I think is kind of interesting since we have so many tourists come in, but I think they're spending less money here when they do come in, because that's what our sales tax numbers are reflecting. But our, again, the $6,000 on the road in our budget has been TOT. And our TOT has been growing or maintained throughout the economic downturn, and it's been an amazing event. I think the big reason our TOT has maintained the way it is is because of the work of the Tourism Bureau and what they do. They have been focusing, they've been changing their direction as far as going after the right markets, and they've been bringing people into Mariposa County, and that's why we've been able to stay where we're at.
I am waiting to say that.
The Board of Supervisors recognizes that, and one of their discretionary expenses every year is a contribution to the Tourism Bureau. Mariposa County contributes $500,000, in the past several years, to the Tourism Bureau. Before there was the Independent Tourism Bureau, the county had its own tourism office, and they had a budget of approximately $500,000. And, as I was saying, I can say this, I think that the money's being much better spent now than it was then. The county did its best, but bringing in professionals and spinning offices and independent entity, I think, was one of the smartest moves Board of Supervisors made in promoting Mariposa County, and that was done just about seven years ago. As I said, though, our overall revenue, the TOT's been going up a little bit, this last year we saw an ever-so minor dividend, or within our fourth straight year of record TOT. The other funds, some of them have gone down a little bit, but essentially, we have flat revenues. We've been getting the same amount of money the past few years, and, I mean, that's wonderful compared to some counties where their revenues have decreased by as much as 30, 40 percent. And those are the counties where you see, you know, they're laying off, just looking at one county in Nevada, they let off 700 people in the last five years out of their county staff. Now, you will have to adjust to whatever your revenue source is, because we can't generate, we're not the federal government, we can't print more money, we can't make more money coming in. Like many of your businesses, though, we have had some pressures being put on, although our revenue's been steady, our costs have been going up. Now, there's the regular costs we all have to deal with, energy costs, those go up, other things like that. But we have one cost factor that really is somewhat out of our control that keeps going up every year. And I've been looking at the numbers in preparation for these meetings. Those numbers have been going up almost at the same pace that any minor increase that we get in our revenues is. And it's always been all over the process, everywhere, but that is the cost of retirement benefits for county employees. Maybe unfundability you hear about, but really, the hard cost of that going has been going up. And a lot of people say, well, then you need to cut the retirement benefits. That's easy. I wish it was, Eddie, but it's not. Retirement benefits due to court rulings here in California are protected. We cannot negotiate lower benefits for current county employees, even if they came to us and begged us to lower their benefits. The courts in California have said we cannot do that. So the retirement, and I can't voluntarily reduce it, and neither can any of our employees. And the cost of the benefits keep going up in part because investments that have been made are, you know, we're subject to the investment world, we work for an organization called PERS. Don't want to bore you with all the detail, but there's been some rough investment here. So, again, in a typical year, our increase is 100, 200, I've had as high as $500,000 increase in our retirement cost over the last few years. Now, we're not locked in this forever. The Board is able to lower retirement costs for new employees, and this Board has taken very positive actions in that manner. They have, new employees have lower retirement benefits than those employees that have been here for some time, significantly lower. New employees have lower health benefits upon retirement than employees who have been here for several years. Then last year, the state legislature, and the governor in particular got involved in the whole scheme of things, they lowered it even further. So now we have another tier of employees, people who hired today have an even lower retirement benefit than the employees who were here before. But it's going to take a long time for this to work through the system. So what we're facing now in Mariposa County is low revenues, increased costs. We have reduced services ever so slightly, we have very minor reductions that we've been able to do. We had two layoffs this year, doesn't sound like a lot, unless you're one of those two people that were laid off this year. We've had a few layoffs in other times, but we're getting to the point, we're at the point where something's got to give. Either we need to generate more revenue, or we are going to have to reduce services. And reducing services, well, first place I will recommend, and the Board makes the decision, first place is you look at those things that are niceties, but you don't really need. And unfortunately, those are things like parks and libraries, those types of things are totally discretionary, and again, around the state, that's where people generally look. Mariposa County has three swimming pools. That's unheard of in a county of our size, they have three swimming pools. Most counties don't have any pool. I mean, it's just a nice, it's expensive, and they just, they don't do it, but we have come to expect a certain level of services here in Mariposa County. Our Sheriff's Department, we have good response time for a county to put together what Mariposa County is. There are counties where really overnight, the only deputy you can get will come out if there's an absolute, like a murder, otherwise they'll see you in the morning. And we have response times, we have deputies stationed throughout the county, and this is great, this is what we've come to expect, but these are the types of things that the Board is going to have to look at and consider if something doesn't change within the county. So the Board is considering increasing the TOT. It's the one area that they have discretion over, and it's also the one area where the funds can come directly into the county. Property taxes are limited by Proposition 13, they're not going to go up, and the county only hits about 30 percent of the property taxes, by the way, the rest goes primarily to schools. Sales tax, we could increase the sales tax rate, but the amount of money that's generated by sales tax is, like right now, like one-tenth of what we generate in TOT. So the TOT is really the only place where the Board has the opportunity to look for an increase, to increase the revenues. Now, in the old days, it used to be a decision of the Board. If they wanted to increase the TOT, bring an item before the Board of Supervisors, they discuss it, they vote on it, and it's done. And that's how TOT got started and has been imposed throughout the county for most of the county's life. Mariposa County was the first county in the state of California to have a TOT. It became legal to do a TOT on January 1st, 1964, and Mariposa County put in their TOT on January 27th, 1964. So right after vacation, they had three weeks to do it, and they put in the TOT. That initial rate is 4 percent. Over time, there have been different increases in TOT, and the last one was in the late 90s. The rules of the game changed in the mid-90s, and that last TOT increase in the late 90s was the first one that fell under what was a new law that we voted on called Proposition 218. The power to just increase taxes no longer resides in the Board of Supervisors. Power to increase taxes resides in the people either who are being asked directly to pay the taxes, or resides in the power of the electorate within the county. If the Board wants to raise the transient occupancy tax now, which, by the way, over in my neighboring county in Tuolumne, they call it Tax on Tourists for TOT, so transient occupancy tax. But if they want to raise the TOT, it requires the approval of the electorate of the county, the voters. Everybody who votes has the opportunity to vote on that and give yea or nay on whether or not they even have the ability to. The voters saying you can raise it, that doesn't mean the Board has to. The Board cannot raise them without the permission of the voters. The people who wrote Proposition 218 also, man, they knew what they were doing, and they put some other rules in there as far as increasing the TOT, or any tax, really. First of all, they did away with entities doing a special election. If you want to get something passed easier, you call a special election, where only the people that are interested in that subject really bother to come out and vote. They, that's not allowed anymore. The TOT election, or any tax election like this, has to be on ballot when the members of the governing body are up for election, also on that same ballot. So what that does is limit the county to be able to even propose a TOT to every two years when the Board of Supervisors is up for election. Now, it could be on the primary election next year, or it could be on the fall election next year, but it's an every-two-year window is when this can even come up for a vote. The people that know about this thing say that you should put it on your general election rather than the primary. So most likely, if it's going to be conducted, it will be on next fall's general election, if the Board chooses to put it on, and that's where we're at right now. The Board has not made a decision whether or not they're going to pursue trying to increase the TOT. They have been discussing it, and they told me to go out and find places to do outreach and to bring back input and discuss it. That's why I'm here today. I'm kind of a reconnaissance person for the Board, although we have Board members here, so they're here to direct this thing. That's good. So the Board, like in December, has asked me to come back with a report for them to discuss. They really only need 88 days ahead of the election legally to put it on, but they want to make the decision far ahead of that, in part, we're a small county, and our elections people would scramble like crazy if we don't give them enough warning to do that. We've looked at it, and yes, it's an increase in taxes, and it's an increase in costs, and how's the economy turn around? So you're increasing the cost, so it's going to have an effect on demand. You don't want to do something that's going to put you out of compliance or out of the marketplace with other areas. And we're looking into all of that, the Tourism Bureau has provided us with a lot of information about that, and we have looked at where TOT is in some of our neighboring, as well as competitive markets. The lowest TOT in our area that I was able to find is Calaveras County. They're at 6 percent. By the way, this is just a straight TOT, I don't know about their V.I.D. charges, I've not looked into that. Calaveras is at 6 percent, Fresno County is at 11.4 percent, Madera's at 9 percent, Yerced County's 10 percent, Tuolumne County's 10 percent. I've also been told that all of them are watching us to see what we do, because I've heard from some of them, yeah, you guys start, we'll be able to follow soon. But when you look at tourist attractions, tourist areas, they tend to be higher. Orange County is at 11.9 percent, San Francisco's at 14 percent. But Orange County, remember, counties and cities are separate entities, we don't have any cities here in Mariposa, so the county gets the TOT. But if a hotel is in a city, the city gets the TOT. The city of Anaheim, which to me is most of the prime stuff in Orange County, their TOT rate is 15 percent, the city of Anaheim. Los Angeles County's at 12.6 percent, but the city of Los Angeles is at 14 percent. So again, when you're looking at tourist destinations, those are some of the numbers. The Board has not taken this lightly, nobody's up there going, oh yeah, raise the TOT and everything will be good. They, before they make that decision, they will have a hearing on this, they have an open public discussion in this room where they will formally take input on it, and the bottom line is, no matter what they do, all they can do at this time is decide yea or nay to put it on the ballot, and then it will be up to the public to decide whether or not to give them that permission to increase the TOT. Some folks have brought up the idea of it would be more palatable to increase the TOT if we knew precisely where it was going. So for instance, if I committee will go to the Sheriff and Fire Department, which is always where we do the public, that's a good place to wave a flag, you know, everybody goes to Sheriff and Fire Department, or pick your favorite, half of it will go to increase our libraries, or something like that. Whatever it is, if you earmark and designate a specific place for the TOT, the law is different. And what was a 50 percent, a majority vote for just to put it into the general fund, turns into a two-thirds majority necessary if you're going to earmark the TOT. That seems backwards to me. You know, yes, you promise where it's going, and it has to go somewhere, it takes two-thirds, but if you just give it and let the county decide where it's going, it only takes half. While it seemed backwards to me, that's what the law is, that's what we're dealing with. So my recommendation to the Board is not going to be to earmark it, because a two-thirds vote, it's hard to get people to agree in a two-thirds majority that the someone comes up with the case. So a two-thirds vote is a very high bar for any kind of hash. As I said, the Board is still contemplating this, they have not made a decision, there's all sorts of thoughts on tweaking it. Right now, they're talking about a 2 percent increase, is that the right number? They've talked about possibly different ways of implementing it, but the Board needs to have that input, and the Board will eventually have to weigh. If we don't get an increase, we will have some sort of reduction in services. How that pans out, I don't know. If you guys keep doing really, really good and not being, how much bring in there to hear it, that reduction could be very much minimized. But we are, there's something has to give. Our budget, we run a pretty darn lean budget in Mariposa County. Our budget is available out there on our website, and I encourage you to go take a look at it, and if you ever have a question about it, call me, because I'll be happy to explain where the money is going. But this is where we're at, this is what the Board is looking at. So I wanted to explain this to you, and then I'm open for discussion and questions, and this lady has been wanting to ask me a question.
Can you explain, right, it's 11 percent, and 1 percent is the assessment, 10 percent is the county tax?
Right.
So you're saying you want to make a 12 percent county tax, and so 11 percent is the...
Yes.
So it's a total of 13. Can you clarify, do you hit directly 1 percent by the straight?
It's part of a contractual agreement under the Management District Plan, that we recently have a plan for a five-year plan.
Right, see, and I was, I'm glad I'm here, because I was thinking, you want to get all the increase in your...
But I do want to clarify one thing, the Tourism Bureau is not initiating this proposal to increase the TOT. So in fact, the Board, at the current time, is taking a neutral position.
Yes.
Not supporting it, or, or not supporting it, but based on what the county decides to do, there has, the Board has identified an ad hoc committee within its board structure that depending on what the county Board of Supervisors decides to do, that ad hoc committee will make a determination as to what's the position that you're orienting. So I want to make it very clear, this is not being initiated by the Tourism Board.
Sorry, I didn't...
No, no, because we're conscientious about the competitive nature of where...
Of course, it's a relationship, I've also said it in part, but it may or may not. I'm also interested in knowing if you're testing, if this comes to vote, can imagine if anyone votes against it, because it has a choice. So I think once it's put out there, I think it's passing, because it could fail.
It's funny, I'm hearing from the hotel operators that, yeah, of course, the electorate is going to vote for it. I don't, it is a tax, and when you see the word tax on a ballot, but all I can tell you is, the county I used to work for, they thought it was going to be slammed up, they went to increase their TOT, and it went down in flight. And it was just a very, it's not even a tourist, I mean, I'm from Kern County, we don't attract a lot of tourists to Baker Street. And it was really only going to affect the hotels on the middle of Lake Isabella, but it was voted down by the election. So there's no sure thing.
But I think ours, I mean, if you're to say it's always impossible.
Well, the only time they've ever voted on it was in the 90s. Okay, one time it was voted on. Prior to that, the decision was made solely by your elected five members of the Board of Supervisors. That's the only time the electorate got a problem. So, yeah.
Rick, do you have a feeling for the sensitivity of your income versus an increase in the TOT? Is it going to produce the same amount, more, or less, or a risk?
There is. Is an increase of 2 percent in the TOT going to reduce the number of people that are going to come into bookrooms, or are the rates you're charging for the rooms, they're even charged for the rooms? I've not done sensitivity studies, see the demand curve on where that goes.
That is part of the concern, that an increase of that amount could affect people's decisions to come to you, so maybe not to come to you, so maybe they'll stay, because they have options. And if Calaveras is 4 or 6 percent, they probably don't care about particular opinions, they care about the bottom line.
Exactly.
So, I'm just going to say, it is a sensitive component, and there's a debate, there's really no way to predict the future, because if you look at New York, they're 16, 17 percent, and you know what, you can't get a room for $3.50 bucks in every hotel in school. San Francisco, you can't get a room for $300 or less, and they're running 110 percent occupancy. So is 2 percent going to make us less competitive? There's a substantiation on both sides as to, we don't know if it could or not.
I'm all for raising the TOT, but not the way you think of raising the TOT, I think we should improve what we've got, improve services, improve quality of the hotels, we pass out an additional, you know, four-star hotel in the area, increase tourism reward into the off-season and shoulder season, and increase pot that way, not by raising it by 1 or 2 percent, because we do have to deal with competition around the communities, I do think it would hurt. But if you go on sites like TripAdvisor or whatever, and you read what people have to say about the county, and what certain facilities offer, you'd be shocked. I think we have a big way, big task to do to improve, and I think, Carrie, the Tourism Bureau could really help with bringing in people off-season. And I think that's the way we increase the pot, not by raising it by 1 or 2 percent.
When I was in District 1 Supervisory, there was really on the table the competition of quarters. So you have the 41 on this side, the 41, the 120, and of course, 140. And as it played out, the 41 really had quite a competition going because of the different TOTs in the communities or counties that were involved there. I remember this very clearly. So this is something that we, like it or not, are carded up. So this is something that we, like it or not, are card up. And so as we go up with TOT, my question would be, what's the other quarters doing?
Oh, I think as you mentioned, I'm kind of waiting to see what we're going to do.
Yeah. And personally, I don't, if there's another way, TOT is not the answer. Because the ten plus it is eleven, and that's pretty high.
Well, that's why the tourism bureau hasn't taken this stance. We want to further evaluate based on...
I fully understand your position, yes.
Thank you.
Mike, I know you're a messenger here, so I promise not to shoot you, but... You know, we've been blessed with a healthy flow of tourism TOT when other counties have been struggling for income. However, there's some impending circumstances that will most probably impact Mariposa's tourism traffic in the future. National Park Service will start implementing the reced river plan sometime in their future. And that's how they'll have some impact on our traffic as a whole. And Caltrans is planning to begin working on the tourism side sometime in twenty-seventh, which will definitely have an impact on traffic in Mariposa as well as the one-fourty corridor. So my question is, why would we want to add another deterrent for tourists to come to Mariposa and use the one-fourty corridor? Rates, especially fat rates and other rates, do matter to our tourists. And I guess I always want to know what the total cost of their stay is going to be before you go live. And the tax is definitely a part of that total price. If we raise the TOT, then we're effectively raising that total price for our best stay. And my concern is, will we be competitive with these returns that are intended with our neighboring counties? Like you mentioned, Resett County's a ten percent, Wollongong County's a ten percent, and Bear County is a nine percent. It seems to me that in the face of having less traffic come through our corridor, it would be on the rise to raise the rates. You know, it's been said that, well, we need to offset the impact that tourism has on the county across the operation. The additional impact that tour struck has to our infrastructure is minimal when you think about the payback that the county gets in the form of TOT. Earlier, you mentioned, well, the county for tourism budget every year. And I have to consider reducing that, but I liken it to a cash cow. And I think this cash cow is being offered pretty hard. And if you mount it too hard, you might lose it. So my suggestion is that we encourage the board supervisors to get more cash cows, less to find other means of reversing our economy, encourage other business models to come in. So not quite so in the moment, just the tourism trade for our...
Any community that relies on a one cash cow is subject to devastation.
And again, this is to generate the same amount of revenue. So while these other revenue sources are there and they're real, I just amagitude, how are we going to double our retail sales in Mariposa County? Or if we want to get to the same level as a two percent increase in TOT, we would have to triple the total retail sales in Mariposa County to generate the same revenue. Those are just some of the realities of, you know, I'm a numbers guy, and I've looked at this kind of thing. So that's kind of part of the whole mix and part of the reality of what we're facing. Our property values are not high enough. But I cannot see anything on the horizon over the next ten years that would cause a twenty-five percent increase in our property values from a tax purpose. Remember, you don't get to increase taxes if they just go up in value. You have to have this turnover in new properties to make that happen. So that's a little bit of what we're facing here. I just want to let you know how those numbers pan out. But nobody is, no one from the board supervisors is taking this lightly. And I think even the tourism bureau, as far as what is our sensitivity of demand, elasticity of demand, I can't help it, that's what it's going to do in college. You know, what that increase is going to be. Also, and I know no one will believe this because I've worked for the government, but I tell you, if the board looks and sees that all of a sudden they're shooting that golden news at where to go up, they can reverse themselves. Now, I know taxes don't tend to go down, but I really think that they would be responsive if there was a negative impact. They can take action, or you can vote in people who will take action to do that. But all of that is theoretical and down the road. Again, I'm not really here to pitch it, I'm just trying to explain the thought processes that need to be so far.
Can the board reduce it on its own motive, or does that have to go back to...
Yes, the board can reduce it. They just can't go any higher than what they've been given authority to do. They could turn it off next week, you know, if that's what the board chooses to do. They could eliminate the TOT.
Question, I guess, and then a couple of statements. In relation to the increase in TOT, if you said it's by a two million dollar increase to the budget, if that one goes through, I would love to have an increase like that in my budget. But if I were to go to my owner and say, "I want to increase my budget by X amount of dollars," they're going to ask me, "How are you going to spend that? Are you going to spend it on infrastructure, or are you going to spend it on marketing, or are you going to spend it on what?" Because it would make sense to do that. You said that if we don't do that, we can be increasing services. If we do make that tourism increase, and two million dollars put into the general fund, whether it's designated or not, as a voter, I would appreciate knowing how the board supervisors anticipate spending that. Does that mean more government? Does that mean more services? And if so, what are those services?
I can't speak for the board as far as what they are willing to commit to, et cetera. I'll tell you the list of things that I've been reading today. One of which is, there's infrastructure needs that we have some problems here that we're really having a tough time of finding. I think that they would be able to make some commitments on that. One of which is courthouse needs more work done on it. We also have some other infrastructure problems within the county. Of course, there's always, the roads can always use more and be better. I mean, I don't think any, I've never had anyone come here and say they're totally satisfied with the roads. But these are the types of things the board, you have a very big point, the board says, they want to increase the TOT, I would suspect that there will be, these will be the immediate impacts and projects that the board wants to accomplish with that increase in the TOT, and I think that would be a smart thing for the board to do.
A couple of side points. I think it's probably difficult to really compare Mariposa County to San Francisco when it comes to a higher occupancy, because our occupants are very different. And also, if you're traveling to San Francisco, you're not going to want to stay in Santa Fe. But oftentimes, people coming to Yosemite don't understand that Fresno is two hours away. And so they'll choose to stay there, whether it's a bus, whether it's an individual, or a headspace. And so the competition by our neighboring areas, I think, is very different than San Francisco or Anaheim, or some of the areas that have access to this. Especially if you compare ourselves to those areas that we need to understand as well. And then lastly, I also understand that, you know, we decided that we increased the TOT to be pulled back by the board supervisors. But once that happens, it takes some years to recover. And so just kind of caveat out, saying, if we increase it, if we see it's a problem, that problem's going to last for many years. It's not just going to reverse it on the day that the board supervisors have, okay, it'll last ten percent.
Thank you.
I'm from Yosemite West, and our market is a little bit in Mariposa, I understand that. Your season actually is longer than ours, because ours is basically mid-May through later day, and then we're in off-season. Last year, you may remember, the antivirus killed us. We had no fall, no September, no October. This year, things are looking good. Rimfire happened, guess what? No calls for reservations, we are dead at this point. These are realities we have to face and deal with. We don't have any backup with the, when the market went bad in two thousand five, two thousand six, once that downturn happened, we had to struggle like everybody else because of visitation drop. So we've been working and working, but when you're hit with these difficulties, you've just got to keep going somehow. Right now, if the TOT were increased, we would have to reduce our rates in order to maintain that same cost level, the final cost that the visitors are looking at. So instead of it being the tourists who are paying the two percent, we're taking the hit. And we've been here, and we've been here. You have excellent point, the best way to increase the TOT at this time is increase the occupancy from September to May. If we were to do a twenty percent increase in occupancy in that time period, we would have a big boost in the TOT, which would help the county, and it would help all of us, too. So instead of it being something that's hard on these, and hard on these, and hard on these, it benefits the hotel, the vacation rental, and hotel operator, it benefits the county, and it benefits the tourists. They can come and see Yosemite or Mariposa at a different time of year when there's fewer people, we've got lots of things going on, and it's a great time to be here. I would rather see no money going to the tourism bureau so that we can keep that engine generating, particularly off-season, so that we can increase some money for the county, we can increase the revenue for the people here so that everybody is a productive.
Rick. I think everyone here probably recalls that we used to have a five million dollar set aside that the county had, and it wasn't that many years ago. And it was in the century, and it's gone. And most of us know why, many of the reasons why, that it is gone. But anyway, it's something to remember as we proceed down this road farther in the future. Don't let it happen again.
The county has a two-point-three million dollar reserve, and it's had that reserve. It has a two-point-three million dollar reserve, and it has never touched the two-point-three million dollar reserve. There was another two million dollars that was set aside for some other purposes, which we have tapped into, that was never a formal reserve. But we've never touched into the two-point-three million dollar reserve. And I don't foresee, well, a major catastrophe in that line. But that money is there. And the board made decisions on spending some of that reserve in part, not the reserve. Those funds that were designated somewhere else, it's kind of how we've kept our head above water. We've had a couple of years where we had proposals to do layoffs and reduce services and close parks and cut library hours. And rather than do that, the board has tapped into some of those funds, and some of those funds were also tapped into to help complete the fire stations. Now, we built three, we're going to complete four fire stations in Mariposa County without borrowing one nickel. There's, you can't find that in most communities. So there's not a five million dollar, there was a two million dollar set aside, but the formal reserves we've never touched.
Okay, Mike, that still remains that, that may be. But I was, we're going to be, if it isn't that, we have a field of dreams up there, we'll set a half a million there. We either do something with one of these days, or they'll come back tons, and we'll be paying them. And that has certain parameters that you can do with it, or you can't do other things. People have had ideas in the past and such. And I'm just, to me, there's things that are behind the scenes here that can really change the budget, well, the usable fund, very rapidly. And then looking towards the TOT to raise when I feel then we're not competitive as far as other quarters, and we shouldn't be doing it right here. I mean, I have a vacation round. So I know people are trying to, are concerned about paying that extra eleven percent. And anyway, if it's thirteen percent, then that's, you're going to have them looking at other quarters and things like this.
Yeah, and any cost increase is going to reduce demand. I think that's how the gun works, you know? You increase costs, it reduces demand, but how much, and what effect is that going to have on, you know, what's that going to mean for the county? I come from a very narrow point of view, and I admit it. But I'm just, again, trying to lay everything out for you, so that you can at least understand where the board is coming from on this and where the county is on it. And the debate is going to happen, well, it'll be two phases. First, whether or not the board puts it on the ballot. And then I'm sure there'll be ongoing discussion about what the board may or may not do with that money. And in the community, whether or not it's a good idea. You know, this, you know, is all part of the process. This is just the very early part of the process. But the board did want to reach out as much as we possibly can, you know, to the community. And you are the folks, I mean, this is very important to you. So gentlemen back there, just trying to get my attention.
Just a question, for Mike. Are there any counties or anywhere that you've heard of where they have more than one rate, basically a seasonal high rate, some of them in public, that were already not using that?
I've not heard of that, but that's been one of the ideas, and I can't find anything legally that would prohibit the board. One suggestion was, increase the TOT during the prime rate and reduce it during the off-season and more or less offer discount. I thought that was great thinking outside the box. I've never heard of it, I don't know if that goes on. Probably can do more research on that. But that was one of the suggestions that some folks came up with, saying, you know, we're not going to affect the prime season, people, we're going to fill up. But it's almost counterproductive when we're trying to do it this shoulder season, so make it go on sale, lower the rate by two percent. That's a suggestion which the board could entertain. I don't know if it would drive our tax collector crazy. Because that's the man responsible back in the corner here, collecting it. By the way, you say, "Shoot the messenger," that's the guy that's telling us now. Well, he just stuck enforcing it. But that has been suggested, I never heard of it before. I'm going to a meeting in about a month where all the CAOs in the state get together, and that is on my shortlist, I have two things that I'm going to be asking them. And it's a great forum to do it, just go there and say, "Hey, you guys do this." But again, TOT to counties is not that, it's not on the top of everybody's list like it is here. Cities, yes, but not to counties, because they don't get that much TOT. Usually, the prime hotels are in the cities. And so they only get the ones that are in the unincorporated areas, and that's usually, like I said, a footnote to a budget.
Ricky, people have other thoughts, questions, concerns, they can contact you directly?
They can contact you.
Phone, et cetera, regarding...
Certainly, they can contact me, and you can contact your board member. I mean, I've got three of my bosses here right now. But I'm saying this anyway, these people, the people you've elected are accessible. They will listen to you, they will return your call, they will talk to you. It's not like a lot of other communities. They, they're all, we all got the same phone number. The Gazette publishes it every week, right in the front, second page of the Gazette. every week, right in the front, second page of the Gazette, it's in the phone book, they all have webpages, their emails are there, and you can talk to your board member. If they don't get the answer, they'll come to me and make me get the answer. And also, I'm more than willing to share any information with you regarding the proposal or anything we do, actually. I mean, it's not just this cocoon TOT and taxes, there's a lot going on in the county. And, but, that's how Mariposa County operates, your board here, they don't have staff, they don't have four or five layers of people to go through. So, if you wanna contact them, have a conversation with them, they're all willing to do that.
And on that note, I guess.
Just saying, the board supervisors, they have a website, should they each have a little bit of a website?
Yeah, each one has their own, it's part of the county website.
You must, you have to say they have a website.
Yeah, it's part of the county website, each one has their own.
And with that, I'll just extend the same thing. If any of you ever have any questions about the Tourism Bureau, what we're doing, if you need some help, we're there for you, but we can't help you if you don't reach out to this list. We won't have all the answers, and if we don't have the answer, we'll try to find you a source to get you the answer. But, we're there at your disposal, so use us. Yes?
I think, since we have tourism here, it seems like before I've heard tourism say that they want a cut of that two million dollars, is that true or not?
They didn't hear?
It seems like before I've heard somebody from tourism saying that if the tourism was to get on board with this rate increase, that they would like a cut of that two million dollars. So, was that true or not?
I think the tourism, and I can't speak for them, but I think I'm hearing what he's saying. The Tourism Board would like some assurance that if this increase goes in, that their funding is more stable and remains so.
Okay, would they get, would they get any of the increase then?
The Tourism Bureau has not taken a formal.
A formal stance, right.
But, that only stands as a reason that, you know, if there's more money available, that's the logic to put, you know, return on it.
Right. But, I think that, I think the voters need to know that, that, I know you can't designate it, unless you say you're gonna designate it, then it becomes a sixty-some percent vote. But, the voters need to know what the money's gonna be spent on.
In Tooley County, they had a similar thing, and they gave state publicly, they were gonna earmark a certain percentage of an increase that they were proposing to the Tourism Bureau in Tooley. And the TOT did pass at that time, and they have continued to make that contribution like a hard percentage of what, you know, hard percentage of the total TOT, or percentage of the increases, et cetera. The board can commit to that only to a certain degree. I mean, this board can say, next year, we'll do this, but they cannot tie the hands of future boards, unless we have that two-thirds of an actual commitment. But, they, I have found during my time in county government, when you have something that becomes institutionalized like that, then you never touch it. You know, like, we, we have some funds that come in from what's called a tobacco settlement fund. Those are totally discretionary, the board can do whatever they wanna do with it. But, years ago, they decided that that money is going to be only for capital improvement projects in the county, and it's always been used for capital improvement projects in the county. I keep reminding them, discretionary, but again, when things become institutionalized, it's hard to make a change. Where it becomes the most impie is the first few years. Once it's been done for like four years, then it becomes institutionalized. Or it has not made that commitment to the Tourism Bureau, Tourism Bureau hasn't formally asked for that commitment, it's part of the discussion, there's a whole lot of things that are part of this discussion. Some people would say, oh, just say it's all gonna be for law enforcement, and you'll get it passed easy. You know, I mean, there's just lots of different ways to look at it, but that's, really, we're not in the marketing mode, we're just in the discussion mode.
The board could basically change the percent too. They can say, instead of saying two percent, you guys, the board's discretion can say, we're only gonna increase it one percent.
They could do that.
If it's not set in stone that it's two percent, that's good.
Right. One more comment if you want to respond.
Yeah, earlier, you mentioned that part of the strategy that we're pursuing is to grow the off-seasons.
It's not a hard strategy, it is the strategy.
And in that way, we would grow the volume for the county, wishing to grow the TOT volume as well. The other thing you mentioned was infrastructure, and you're interested in seeing that we increase the length of stay. I think that infrastructure and length of stay are directly related. In order for us to encourage guests to stay in Mariposa, build volume, two things have to be there. Number one is, it has to be a reasonably priced place to stay and spend your money. And two, there has to be something here for you to do and spend your money on. And so, I would encourage the board supervisors, as well as the board of the Tourism Bureau, to consider what can we do with the money we have to develop our infrastructure. Right now, if you look around town, there's a lot of room for improvement. We have bleach, we want to sidewalks, where sidewalks need to be. We have a really inconsistent parking situation for tourists. So, there's lots of room for improvement in infrastructure, if you want to power the kind of destination place for people to sit in.
Okay, thank you, everybody, so much. It's such a great turn up, we appreciate the time.